Welcome, everybody, to the 10:30 a.m. work session here of Southampton Town Trustees. I'm Scott M. Horowitz, President. I will ask Secretary of Treasury Ed Warner to start the roll.
Scott Horowitz?
Here.
Ed Warner, I'm here. Chip Maron?
Here.
Joe McLaughlin?
Here.
Matt Parsons?
Present.
Mr. President.
All right, all right, let's get right to it, then. I have 21 Old Main Road, Village Y'Quaw. Andy's. How are you?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Sign in real quick. I'll give you the floor.
Okay, we discussed this at the previous work session, and we have revised the plans as requested, which would adhere more to the blue book. We got rid of the ramp and the float, and we extended the fixed pier out to where the float was proposed. And there's a five-foot-by-16-foot platform, and it also incorporates a seasonal kayak rack.
You got James?
Yeah, that's what you guys requested, so.
And also included the rail specifications in the cover page and the plans as requested.
Okay.
Minimal, James.
But he has stand plans, so.
Yeah.
I don't care.
Yep, minimal rail. I think you're good.
You good?
I'm good.
Yeah, cross section.
I think you've done exactly what we asked you to do. Do you have anything else on with us today?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Okay, a couple, a couple by the owners that I assume are here. Guys, they're Paul Joseph, 58 Chinookock Roadie Squaw. Take one up.
And the next one is actually right next to it, too, so if you want to...
Want to do both at the same time?
I think it makes most sense.
And then I got James Pisoneski. Is that you? Why don't you folks come up, state your name, the mic for the record, and then everybody has to sign in on the sheet. I see you're flanking a project, I think, recently done, right? And you have, both looking for redoing your bulkheads. You have Delandro Andrews Engineering, right? And you're both are looking to redo this with compliant material and get to an elevation that adjoins the neighboring properties approximately 5.3 elevation. Is that correct?
One of them, one of them's going up and one of them's not going up, is what I could see on the...
It looked to me, when I examined it, engineered plans, it looked to me like they were both showing or indicating that they were going to be hidden at elevation, I think, 5.3. Matching, you're going to be matching the other project, right? Is there permits for all these floating docks that we have back there? You know, you guys have permits for the floating docks?
No, I just found that we did it because over 20 years ago when we bought it, it's the same one that's there.
No, you guys got to get permits for the floating docks.
Or remove them.
Or remove them, but I don't...
That one's going because it's made out of wood and...
And then what are you doing?
We're going to get a new one.
Okay, you have to apply for a permit for a floating dock. You can't just, you know, we've had this discussion with the Chinookock Shores folks. It's like, goes back to permit number one of Chinookock Shores when they had joined those canals with the bay system. It was okay, it's okay to do that, but you have to comply with all the rules and regulations of the Board of Trustees. So that's been gone over time and time again, so.
We started the process with it.
Okay, good. How about yours?
No, I haven't gotten a permit from mine, but mine's... How do we know if we... The existing owner before didn't have a permit.
Doesn't matter.
Submit a FOIL request.
Yeah, you got to send a FOIL request. If you stop by the office right in Hampton Bays, like, literally five minutes from where you live, they'll walk you through the paperwork that you need, okay? And then that'll make that determination, and then you can do the same thing that these folks are doing, make applications so that you tighten up and legalize everything that you have going on over there. Because while you're going through all of this, you're going to want to get it all straight. And we have a responsibility to do that anyway, so we're going to clean it all up right now.
Be advised, if you bought it without having a permit, you bought it with a violation, you have the violation now, so.
Right. Yeah, that...
I mean, getting a permit, going through the permitting process, it'll allow you to know what type of material, the size of the structures that we permit, so everything will be consistent on your property and the neighbor's property.
See, unfortunately, there's a tremendous amount of pressure and request for these compliance checks that people are doing prior to closing on real estate because they're finding out that they're, like counsel says, they're buying violations, right? It doesn't, it doesn't go away just because the ownership changes. You kind of buy that problem. So it's better to deal with it now and be done with it.
Yeah, and sometimes the banks won't close until they have all of the compliance.
Well, then we're not going to approve a bulkhead application until you either remove the dock or apply for a permit for the dock, because if it's not, you know...
Well, I mean, I think...
The guy's going to take the floating dock away when he comes and does bulkhead.
Yeah, they have to.
But as long as it's not back and they apply for the permit, it can be legalized if it meets all of the blue book.
Right, I mean, we're on public record now. I mean, you're on TV, obviously, right?
Probably full of fault when it picks it up.
Yeah, I just, you know, I don't have an issue with, you know, moving forward on your bulkhead permits, but with the understanding that we got to clean this up, because otherwise it's going to turn into a notice of violation and create a whole other problem. We don't want to do that. We would rather you just, let's fix the issue and move on. You know what I mean?
How much more is the dock permit?
Well, if it's a separate application, it would be the 500 application fee.
You would, you would be better off getting the thing out of the water, doing your bulkhead and then applying from scratch.
Well, that's up to you.
An additional $500, is that what I understand?
Yeah, yeah, you got to pay, you got to go by the permit fees, exactly. I don't handle the permit fees, but if you look on the sheet, you'll see.
It'd be wrapped up in the bulkhead, right?
You could, yeah, you could put it on this and apply for it, so it doesn't have to pay the extra...
Yeah, you could do it, you could modify, right? You could change that and modify that if you want to submit paperwork now. In other words, yeah, James.
You don't need to modify it, you just...
Add it on.
Hold this.
Yeah, we could hold this.
Add the language.
You add the language for the dock.
And that'll save you that money.
And we'll have it on one permit. You'll get a bulkhead and a dock permit all in one...
One shot.
One shot.
Probably what you should do.
And it won't cost...
Have you been working on it? It's already in the, in the process already.
What do you mean?
We already have a permit for the, for the bulkheads already, so what do we do? Go back in there?
Well, we don't have it, yeah, we have an issued resolution. We don't have it, we haven't issued this permit yet. You just have an application in. So you have to go through, there's still a bit more process that has to be gone through here now, so you have time.
To add it on to your application.
To add this on. In other words, we can hold this.
It won't cost another fee for the application. It'll just be added on to your application.
Oh, right, we can hold this. You can clean this application up, and then when it comes back on for work session, it's indicating, you know, you've got this all done.
It'd be cleaner for you.
It'd be better for you.
Okay.
Which is what I would suggest you do. I mean, the project itself, I mean, Delandro Andrews, you know, you've got the engineer stamps on here, it's just that, you know, you have, it looks like violations built into the project, which is, which is not good. I want to see you repair your bulkheads, it's important, but I also want to see it get cleaned up on the legalization side. And I think that you're in a good position right now to fix, you know, more than just the one thing. And it's more cost-effective for you. You know what I mean?
If you have any further questions or your engineer can contact James in your office.
So what I will do is, we'll hold this, right? We'll, the next work session is the 17th, right?
So you want to hold?
Well, we already started the process of what dock, so.
The survey.
Survey is going to be done and...
So we can hold it, and then it's the 17th, and if you need paperwork, just go right down to 240 West. It's not far from where you live. You can tighten up your paperwork. We can put it back on the 17th. James will direct you, you know, what forms to fill out and what you're going to need. And that way, when it goes to resolution and the permit is approved, you're cleaning up all of your issues there. It's a lot better for you, and, you know, if you decide to sell the house at some point in time, you know, you have these things already taken care of now.
Do you have any idea timeframe when it might be all...
Well, we have another work session on the 17th, so if you can get to the office and provide them with what you need, we could be done with this on the 17th.
Okay, that's good.
And we have two meetings in December, so, yeah, so you...
You'll be done before the end of the year?
Yeah.
I think that's the most cost-effective streamlined thing that you folks can do. So it was worth you coming down here to have a discussion with the board, because you can fix more than just one problem today.
One thing on one whiting, one whiting doesn't have the language in the cover sheet for the height increase, so if you could add that, that matches the...
Right, you got to adjust, you got to adjust the cover sheet to match the plans. So you may want to speak to Delandro and get the wording that he has on the plans to match on that cover sheet. Okay, that's what you're going to want to do. Speak to who you spoke to over at your engineering firm.
Yeah.
And you're going to need to get that wording so that it matches what he's showing on the engineered plans that you have, because that's what's going to end up on the permit. So this way, you'll have everything done proper. All right, and we'll write down the street to help guide you through this, okay? All right?
Mm-hmm.
We're good? So we'll put this on hold, and we'll be back on for the 17th. Okay?
Thank you.
You're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good, thanks. Everybody signed in, right?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Justice Warner.
All right. Sandy Beach, 18 LLC, Taplow Consulting. Good morning.
Hi, Ed Carr, Licensed Marine Engineer with Taplow Consulting. So before you have the revised plans, based on what you asked me to do last time, specifically, you asked that we had a notation that sand would be put into the voids for the loose rock.
Yep.
That was added. You asked for American Beechgrass to be added to the plans, 12-inch on center plugs, that was added. You asked me to find the distance out between the paper road that's still out there and the proposed deck at the top. That's 44 feet. I should note that it's another six feet to the mean high water line, so it's about 50 feet off the mean high water line, but it's 44 feet back off the property line that delineates the owner's upland private property from the paper road on the beach. We also, the biggest thing is, we turned the stairway, as you asked, and it's 15 feet now between the...
Oh, good.
seaward edge of the stair railing that's now been turned 90 degrees.
Yeah, I mean, I passed these pictures around last time. I don't know if anybody wants to see them. It shows the extent of the erosion in the area that the homes along this whole stretch have been facing. The adjoining property just west of that had done a rock, similar rock structure to what they're asking for here to stabilize the bluff, and they also had the sand maintenance agreement. So we had asked them to do several things, because the, as it is right now, the walkway protrudes like a bridge out into the roadway where people, you know, can walk and pass and repass them being a...
So that's why... We have a sand maintenance agreement with this one as well?
Yes, it's right here. It needs to be... This is the agreement, correct, Joe, that you drafted? Does the, do you have a copy of this?
I do not.
Okay, should I give him this copy, or should I have you...
Well, his client's going to sign it, then, yeah, give him that one, and we'll, we'll get it back for our signature.
Okay. I'll have the client sign it and return it to Charlotte.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what, James, is correct, is that's pretty much what we asked them to do, and they've done everything.
Yeah, they've done everything. I just have one question about the deck. It's above 40, it's at 44 feet from the property line?
Yeah.
And then another six feet from mean high water, correct?
Yeah.
And then, so there's also a covenant from the Conservation Board for 75 feet.
Okay.
This would fall in that covenant, so I'm not sure how you guys want to handle that.
Would he need some kind of correspondence from the Conservation Board?
They're going to probably require an amendment to the CNRs that are on file. Unless, unless they put language in which allowed him to get a permit from us.
Probably should have.
I've seen, I've seen that in some of their, their CNRs, so.
Yeah, we should check that.
Have you looked at the CNRs on your property? It's something that you should probably have yourself or your attorney look at and go over it and see what restrictions that are put on the 75-foot buffer that Conservation...
I know this is 75-foot buffer. I thought it was at the discretion of the trustees.
The Conservation Board doesn't give you discretion usually. They're, they're pretty tight with their stuff.
Yeah, sometimes there's a provision in there for...
That allows a path or a structure to be placed there for access to the water.
Or will allow you to get a trustee permit that might not exactly jive with it, but people allow it, so.
Yeah.
So we will, I'll make sure I look at that.
Yeah, and we'll take a look. That way, you don't create any unintended...
Yeah, because if you get hung up on that proposed platform, then you're jammed up.
If you could get, if you do get a copy of the CNRs, just provide a copy to Charlotte so she can give them to me to look at as well.
Okay.
I'll do that.
I would appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
And the application, the...
We had changed the cover letter of the application, so that was done.
Yep.
The one item is the plans I'm printing out that are stamped by the engineers have the correct green heart lumber.
Okay.
The ones that I had sent electronically to Charlotte a couple of weeks ago for you guys to review still said CCA, so I just want to make you aware of that, but the ones that are actually being physically submitted with the seal of the engineer will have the green heart on it.
Well, we'll look it over once we get, we'll probably meet again because you, we need to talk about, discuss the CNRs on the Conservation Board easement there, okay?
Okay, I will get a copy of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll put this on hold until we receive that.
Ed Consultants, SHPB LLC. You have a couple on today, right, Susanna?
Just two.
One with me.
Looking to legalize the existing wood deck of approximately 780 square feet adjacent to the existing bulkhead and within the trustees-owned iconic beach road as shown by a survey dated August 1st, 2025.
Okay, so this is a, there's an existing bulkhead, pre-existing, it's been there forever. They are proposing to legalize the deck that was built between the steps down, the bluff, and the bulkhead. It's all completely landward of the bulkhead and within the iconic beach right-of-line by the trustees. It's at grade...
Do we know how the, being that they're looking to approve it as-built, was there... How are we going to ask for engineered plans if it's as-built? Because I have, you know, reservations about these decks if they're not built properly, because I went through Sandy and several of the decks that were in Chinookock Bay actually lifted up and caused damage to the adjoining property, so I'm just... I want to make sure that it was engineered properly, fastened down, whether it's with helical anchors or cement.
Well, aside from that, it's indicated in, what, a non-disturbance zone?
Well, I looked, but I don't think that exists.
Yeah, but it's, it's on that thing, so how, we're going to do that?
I need to look to the surveyor, because this is a letter of non, we got a letter of non-jurisdiction from the Conservation Board.
Okay, so who put that on there?
It's not on any of the older surveys. What I think happened is when we got the letter of non-jurisdiction, the way it works when you have a bulkheaded property with the Conservation Board is anything within 50 feet landward of water is Conservation Board jurisdiction. So I think the surveyor mislabeled that.
So there's no, there's no covenant, there's no CNR on this property?
I'm sorry?
There's no, there's no covenant to...
There's no covenant that I'm aware of on this property. The old surveys don't have it. The previous surveyor didn't include it. It's not part of the subdivision.
That's got to be cleaned up, then.
Right, we need to clean that up.
Because it's overlaid over the iconic beach road, which is a 75...
Which you can't do.
Which you can't do.
Right.
So, so, okay.
That's why I, there's no, to my knowledge, there was no covenant filed. To my knowledge, you can't file a Conservation Board covenant if it's trustees' lands. And we got a letter of non-jurisdiction for the construction of the house that's there now a few years ago.
So we definitely need to have this cleaned up moving forward, because if we prove it with this on here, the next person comes in...
He's going to come in, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to make a problem.
It's going to be a problem.
Yep, we don't want to make a problem. Let's, let's get that clarification, and obviously, Ed needs clarification.
On how the structure was...
Like, construction drawings, basically, for the deck. You want to see the, I mean, in order to get a building permit, probably, well, after the fact, we probably would not need that. But if you were building a deck, you would...
How big is that deck?
780 square feet.
780?
It just has a square feet, it doesn't actually have the dimensions.
30 by 30?
Uh, it's more rectangular.
25 by 30?
25 by 30, it's fairly...
That's a large deck, right?
It's pretty excessive.
Yeah, but I want to make sure, because if we get a, a large storm like a Hurricane Sandy, and I remember up off of...
I mean, if this was new construction, we'd never approve it.
No.
So we, I think, I think we've got to discuss this in detail.
We got to look this over, yeah.
And once you chase down the language and get the survey tightened up, then we'll...
Let's clean this up first to see what we can do.
So I will get construction drawings drawn up, and I'll get the survey cleaned up and verify that there's no buffer. I haven't been able to find any covenanted language here.
Because the board's got to make a decision if they're going to legalize it anyway, right?
Right.
As it is, or smaller, or...
Exactly.
So you make some, we're not going to say how it's going to come out, but...
But you need that information first.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we need, you need more information.
All right, I'll, I'll do that.
What else do you have here?
The other thing is in Joseph's area. Let me grab that file.
Eight Squabble.
Yeah, you might as well, while you're, while you're up, you might as well be up.
So this one is Eight Squabble Lane in Southampton Village on Wicca Pog Pond. So we're proposing to put in a small dock and do frag-mitey's cutting.
Just in our jurisdiction, or are you applying to the con board as well?
Uh, it's the village.
It's the village.
Village, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, so we would be applying to the village as well. So you would only be authorizing the frag-mitey's cutting that's seaward of high water, which is most of what's here. The high watermark is...
So it's going to be selective cutting, not...
Yes. There is some non-frag-mitey's vegetation that's trying to come in. Other frag-mitey's cutting has been approved on the water body on at least two or three properties that I'm aware of. And, you know, you have some Spartina coming back, I'm sorry, some other vegetation coming back. There's ferns in there, there's some hibiscus.
You can see it all in the pictures here.
Yeah, as long as it's selective cutting and not a compression, like I see.
If you ask for hand-cutting...
By hand, twice a year, it's not a huge area. From low to high water is, is not a huge area. You're only talking about...
Do you have the plans for the dock?
Uh, yeah, right here.
So it's just a fixed timber catwalk with non-treated wood and open grate decking with a little ladder at the end. It's an enclosed pond. You're not going to be doing anything but canoeing or paddle boarding around.
So every, every year, is that, is that going to be in perpetuity, or, I mean, is that going to run the property? The cutting of the frag-mitey's, or...
Joe, can I see the dock, it's out, the plans?
I was curious, because there's no, as long as it's going to happen every year, but is it going to happen in perpetuity, or...
The cutting?
Yeah, the cutting.
Um...
The permit runs with the land automatically.
Okay.
We would have to renew, I mean, what we've done in the past with frag-mitey's cutting is we've come back and renewed it.
Okay, good, okay. Client telling, as detailed in the cut sheet, so that was good.
So the...
Yeah.
Description says...
You can renew the permit.
Okay.
Frag-mitey's cutting, what I would suggest is just giving us an update on it, maybe pictures when you do the cut.
Make sure it's being done.
Something, that might be helpful.
Just make sure it's being done and done properly, that kind of thing.
Okay. Great for frag-mitey's if we didn't have to come back every single year. I mean, I understand why you do it that way, but it becomes, people forget to renew the permits, and then the frag-mitey's takes over, and it's...
Is there a reason we can't draft them for three years?
Well, you don't, you don't give multiple-year permits. You, you give one-year permit for one, for a project, and then you have to do a compliance.
Additional renewals, yeah.
Yes.
Same thing with, like, dredging, like, you do the maintenance dredging, but you have renewals, so you can continue the project, so it's kind of a weird situation with your process. I would say treat it the same as dredging, maintenance dredging, which would be you have renewals to continue to do it.
Yeah, otherwise, we're going to create a problem.
But you got a situation where if there's going to be selective clearing, you want to keep that break on somebody else coming in and just doing a massive clear cut.
Right.
So you, you got to keep an eye on it.
And, and these projects have been very successful throughout the town. As long as you keep the maintenance of the, the hand-cutting, and like, twice a year should be, should be good enough to keep that. And there's been successful projects where the native vegetation does come up. And I, I don't want to discourage a project like that, as long as they're doing it the right way, but you have to make sure that they're doing it the right way.
Yeah, exactly.
Didn't we also hear that if you cut below the water line, you don't, kind of like, kind of suffocate almost? Is that what we were talking about?
There's a lot of different information out there and theories. I have heard that, and it makes sense to me. If there's no greenery above the water line, then...
And we are 10-foot away from the neighbor, I mean, it looks here. We're 10-foot away from the other property, right?
Oh, yeah, minimum. Yeah, I can add that dimension just to verify.
Just, yeah, just, just so we have it on there.
You have DEC permit for it?
Um, the DEC, very strangely, I applied to them, and they're, this is freshwater, and they have new rules that no one seems to be able to figure out. They've decided that Wicca Pog Pond is now, as of recently, a Class 2 wetland, and they're not... They still have jurisdiction, however, they're not regulating it, which means they're delegating their regulation of Wicca Pond, Wicca Pog Pond, to the village.
What you guys have done in the past is usually link up with the Conservation Board's covenants that they have for frag-mitey's removal, so I don't know if you want to just add those. I know they're, it's not, I know it's out of the village, but...
This one has our jurisdiction, Wicca Pog Pond has the wagon trail around the whole thing already that's trustee-owned, so that's...
No, I'm just saying, like, the...
Our jurisdiction, anyway.
I know, I know it's your jurisdiction. I'm just saying that, that, we usually go hand-in-hand with the Conservation Board's covenants for frag-mitey's removal, like, the, like, hand-cutting and the reports and stuff like that. So maybe if that's something that we can add to it, just so that it's consistent with other projects that you've done in the town.
Yeah.
You mean with just the language?
Yeah, just the language.
Yeah, because, I mean, you don't want to find that, it's a village.
You can incorporate, you can incorporate by reference any, any CNRs that the village may impose on them into our permit, if you wish.
No, that's not what I'm...
No, you're talking about consistent with Conservation Board projects for their own good...
The process of the frag-mitey's removal.
Right.
There's restrictions that have been successful. I just want to mirror that.
We should mirror that.
Working, essentially.
We should, because if they've been successful, whether it's coming in on our permitting or the Con Board's permitting, there's no sense in reinventing the wheel if you already have protocols that work.
Yeah, I mean, we're not in Conservation Board jurisdiction here because we're in the village, but.
We understand, but he's talking about using their, using their template.
Are you going to have an E B A or no? Any, any E B A approvals of this or no?
Um, we'll need village wetlands.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right, use their template, that way we.
That's, yeah, I, I don't know exactly off the top of my head where it is, but.
I mean, I tried to model this after the project that I personally got approved by the Conservation Board.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be much different, I think this is.
Yes.
I'll talk, I'll talk to Chris.
Just want to make sure it's.
See what he says.
Talk to who?
Chris Talbot, the, the.
At the village, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's fine, but I, I, I get what James is saying, you know, and like you said, you already, you already anticipated that.
Right, right, I tried to design it so that it's the way that we have experienced positive.
We're all on the same, we're on the same page, I think he's talking about formalizing the template as a, as a policy, that way it just.
As a covenant or just making sure the project?
Just, just, just as a. Making sure that it's all in the cover sheet or something that, that it's meant to be, you know.
Yeah, just as a matter of practice so that folks like yourself kind of know.
Right, I mean, maybe we should talk to the village and make sure that we've got their language because that's the other approval we need.
I, I will. Hold this.
Yeah, let's hold it.
I'll, I'll talk to Talbot and see if I can get the language for Joe and, and, and my staff here, just to have it all on the same page.
Yeah, that sounds good. Um, and what about the dock, are we, are we, um, you seeing issues with the dock besides it's making sure it's ten feet?
Yeah, it's interesting, you don't have to get D E C approval because the heights would be all different if it was, you know, you'd be.
With freshwater, they, um, the, the four-foot height requirement has been a tidal wetlands issue. So freshwater, we haven't.
We haven't had to deal with that.
Not consistently, so.
My only question was, the path is existing, correct?
Yes, the path is existing.
And there's a gate there because there's a fence, so.
Right.
You don't, you know, just to, the discussion of moving into the middle, you don't want to have to move a gate.
Right.
Probably not, it's closed, closed body.
And there's no, no access along the, the waterfront to, for pedestrians.
They're trying to take jurisdiction over puddles.
Upstate, New York Army Corps permit, is there an application into them? Does there need to be? Any correspondence from them?
We submitted to the Army Corps, we haven't received anything back.
Because what happens if they come back with their fifty-four inch high dock that, that they're gonna, I'm just being.
That's a good question, um.
Let's hold, oh, I'll talk to, let's, let's hold this, I'll, I'll talk to Chris and we'll, we'll convene at the.
When I first started on this board, we didn't deal with Army Corps issues, we didn't even know.
They weren't a problem.
Correct, now they would want to take jurisdiction over puddles.
Yeah, because if we make it, if we ma, make the catwalk twenty-four inches and the state comes back with four feet and he's come back with four, five feet, well, four feet, what, eight, what, eight, eight, six inches, it's all over the place and then the homeowner's going to be, uh, stuck in the middle. I remember in Far Pond, an issue years ago where we permitted something the homeowner built, what we had permitted, but the Army Corps came in and actually looked at it, so I, I'm just trying to clean this all up.
Yeah, um, North Haven is a problem right now with dock height, F Y I. North Haven Village has decided they don't want catwalks higher than three feet. So I've tried to explain to them that means the Army Corps will only approve a three-foot wide catwalk if you're going to be only three feet high. So that's, that's another thing we're dealing with because of the Army Corps. But, um, we haven't gotten a response on this yet from the Army Corps and I can, um, let you know what you say, what they say. Obviously, we have to eventually have something that complies with everyone.
Yeah. We tried that, but that didn't work out well.
We, we take things that are relatively simple and we make them very complex.
I know. It's very frustrating.
Home world jurisdiction, I believe in, and common sense, that's.
Absolutely, there's no reason that this should be a four-foot high walkway in this location.
No, not at all.
No.
Not at all.
There's no tidal fluctuation.
Flow through decking, none of them should be, but we, yes.
I agree with you.
They create more liability than solution. This just doesn't make common sense.
I, I'm on your side, but I have to make it comply with everybody, so I'll.
Of course you do.
I'll let you know, um, if I hear anything from the Army Corps. And, uh, if we could hold this over for two weeks, we can at least talk to the village in that time.
Yes, I'll, I'll do that, yeah.
Put it on hold till the seventeenth.
Okay, sounds good.
Right.
Thanks.
It's it for you today, right?
That's it for me, thank you guys.
All right, you got First Coastal now.
Yeah, I think I got.
I see Billy Mack was on time.
I think we have a probably draw here.
You did good today.
I did.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good morning. Good morning. Six Bay Road, Shinnatah Hills.
Uh, Billy Mack for the applicant, First Coastal.
All right, so let's get started. I see there's, uh, a trustee beach road here, which the project is solely on the trustees' right-of-way easement, it's not on the property on this, um, property, um, because the beach road is seaward of the, uh, property line. Um, it's also on this thing, it has a wetlands, non-disturbits, non-filtration buffer, fertilization buffer, um, which is on the trustees', uh, beach road. I don't know who put that in there, is there C and Rs on this property?
Not that we know of.
Well, it's on the survey and there shouldn't be because it's clearly.
Our property?
Our property.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, this is a pre-existing bulkhead, obviously.
Yes.
This is similar to what we were just looking at.
Oh, this is, this gets better.
It gets better?
Yeah, no, it gets better.
It's Monday.
Yes. All right, that, those are the highlights for that. And then we have a, along with this, we have a hundred-foot dock application.
Yeah.
Which, um, is connected to the, uh, bulkhead and goes into the bay.
Yeah.
At, um, what, at a hun, at a hundred feet, at a hundred feet from the bulkhead, it's a point, uh, s, one point six inches of water. At fifty feet, it's one point six inches of water.
Yeah, so there's no appreciable.
There's, there's no appreciable water depth.
That's a clip depth back.
And, and, um, you can't have the dock connected to the bulkhead because.
Public access.
Public access pass and repass vehicular, public.
Vehicular, okay. So that's got to. I haven't been able to drive down there myself, so.
This, this whole stretch from.
You got to keep it open.
From Far Pond all the way to three hundred feet past Grab Road, there is, you know.
So we got some redesign going on here, which you're good at that. I didn't bring my file with me on this one, but this makes sense to pull that away from the bulkhead, uh.
I believe it's about twelve feet, which is standard, you've had several of the.
Yep, that'll get a vehicle through.
For docks along there, which.
And then, uh, pull the dock back to the first one point five.
Yep, and then also take in consideration because there is a, a good stand of wetland grasses there when, and this construction of everything, it's just.
We're, we're west of that.
Yeah, just west of it, I'm just letting everybody in the board know that any, uh, this is South Beach Road, there's a rocky outcropping from the glaciers and then this is, uh, the grass is, uh, basically took over the little spit there.
Yeah, that's a nice little stabilized spot.
Yes.
I like it.
So during the bulkhead construction, we want some kind of, you know, I'd like to have it all done from the landward side, not any, uh, vehicles or boats or anything in that area that would disturb that grass.
You don't want to disturb the grass.
But they're applying for a new bulkhead here?
Yes.
And that, that's, that looks fairly new.
Um.
The piles are rotted, unfortunately.
Because it's the Greenheart.
Greenheart.
Yeah.
How long? Less than ten years. Less than ten.
Yeah, I, I did this permit a while ago.
Yeah, it's, it's really frustrating.
It's really frustrating. And so those are expensive.
This is the third one we've done like this with the piles.
Are you just going to replace the piles and try and leave the whalers?
That's all we have right now, it's very expensive to replace the vinyl, um, and it's an expensive process to take.
Because it seems like the whalers are, are a different Greenheart.
Yeah, they're not as rotted.
They're not, they don't punk out as much as the, the, the pilings.
They're hardwood, because they're.
Yeah, it's a different, it's from a different part of the rainforest or something, or, or it's probably just new growth.
Either way.
Yeah, it's a horrible, um.
I mean, if you used, uh, dimensional lumber like six-by-sixes, which I did on my bulkhead, it, they hold up very well.
They do, yeah, they hold up a little bit.
And they don't split, you don't need banding and.
The engineers have a difficult time with six-by-sixes on a bulkhead like that, that's why they like the, the round piles, they're a little more structural, but after five years, whatever.
You also take in consideration the wave fetch from the other side, the south side of the bay, they're going to get beat up.
What's the deal with his lawn running right up to the bulkhead?
I said it was.
It does not need to be there, we're proposing to replace it with, um, you know, beach grass, of course.
What about the, I'm noticing that there's not a reduce, reduction in grade below the whaler there?
No, it's right.
It's right parallel with the whaler, so that grade is going to have to be at least for it, level with the bottom of the whaler.
I think we're proposing to come up a little bit on that bulkhead, I'm not sure how much. It, but you're going to have to not have it go straight because the sheet runoff's going straight. Yeah, oh, absolutely. You have to provide some kind of capture.
That's going to have to be on the plans.
A little different engineering setup for you.
We're going to need, we're going to make sure that.
Yeah.
Because it, there's obviously a grade going down it as well.
Yeah, this is the first pass on this one, obviously, because of the, the dock situation and the access, I knew that that was going to be some kind of a option, yeah, and then. We have work to do on that one.
Okay.
We have other things.
Yeah, we do.
We'll hold that one over, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got to, you got to work on that one. The other one is, uh, one seventy-five tout.
No, he's got twenty-eight Halsey.
One and S.
He's got one seventy-five tout, and also.
No, no, this, mine is two.
How good. Yeah, he's got one, one, right, you got one seventy-five?
We go as a bulkhead and, uh, removal of, of.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, this one's been before you guys, uh, several times. And I think, uh, we've gotten all the issues resolved. One issue that the applicant did have was that existing, I think it was an eight by eight or ten by ten float, I don't know what that was, that's been removed.
Oh, good.
So that. Where are we at on this one?
Uh, the, the new survey that we have does not show that float, so.
Gone.
Yeah, it's gone, yeah, that was the base.
It was a float, it's good. Boxes that we required?
Like it?
Yeah, we went through, this is the one where we did the radial kind of, we're off of everybody's property line the best we can.
Yes, yep, yep.
This, this had public hearings involved in it.
With McFadden.
Yes, that was the neighbor, yeah.
The dueling neighbors.
Yes. Good times.
The deck is, the dock is off ten feet of property line, there's a buffer zone, uh, with planting plan, planting list. And the, and the float was removed according to the survey and the plans, so.
Float, float's been gone. Well, the float just got removed about three weeks ago, so that was an issue.
Took a while, but we got there.
Yeah. So we're good on this one?
Yeah, we could advance this one.
Thank you.
And it has stamp plans, so.
Yep. Okay, great, thanks. Let's give that one an advance. Right, and then you, you also have another one here. How's here? Twenty-eight Halsey?
Yes, it's a.
Michael Kavanaugh?
Yeah, we've talked about this one a few months back, but I think we had some changes we needed and it looks like you made them.
Okay, yes. Yeah, you requested, um, there, there was a second float that was proposed inside the slip. The owners thought was it was slip and therefore, so we took that out. So everything, uh, slip, uh, float-wise is existing and permitted, he's just looking to increase the, I guess, the width of the boat slip.
Right.
And rebuild the bulkhead.
And they're raising the bulkhead up twelve inches?
Twelve inches, yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to remember, I think the neighbor to the north had that height.
They were up higher, absolutely, yeah, and this is consistent for this, uh, stretch.
So you're still showing two floats?
They, they're both permitted.
Oh, they're both permitted?
Yeah, they were permitted a while, quite a lo, quite a while ago. One's inside the slip and one's outside.
Right, there's one here.
We were trying to show a third one.
Oh, is that, okay, that was.
That we pulled out.
And you gave us the, the permits for the?
They were provided.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you also had a lot more, uh, walkway too, right, but you're limiting that to the.
We pulled back the walkway.
Yeah, you're limiting that to the, around the boat slip and the floating docks.
And increase the vegetation.
Right, yeah, it looks good. You don't want stamp plans for this one?
Yes, stamp plans will provide. Stamp plans? They were provided, or they, no?
No, we've got to get them.
Yeah, and do you need those for one seventy-five?
No, the one seventy-five has stamp plans, you're good for that one.
All right, so I'll get you those and we got some modifications to do on the other stuff. Uh, great, that's it, I think. That's all you have. Thank you. Sixty-five Cliff, I know that you were dealing with that.
We'll get on if you want, I don't know, did you, did you amend your application? To make the square yardage bit or no?
Uh, I don't believe we have, so. So we're not digging. I'll have to circle back with you on that. Seventeenth.[1533.51] Yep, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great one.
And I have a last one.
Now you got Chip, don't you? Michael Davis.
Yeah, Michael Davis, FJCT Land LLC, thirty-two eighty-one Noack Road. Anybody representing that? Negative? Chip?
Do you have pictures on this?
Yeah, I can pull it up. Just give me a second.
This is Noack Road. Six hundred, you wanna wait for the, what, you wanna take, take the six hundred, you wanna, you wanna wait for the, uh, client?
I'm waiting to hear what Chip wants to do.
Yeah, I, I just wanna bring the pictures up so we can get a head start on this. Long or short, they wanna pump-
This is a de-watering, uh-
De-watering application. They wanna pump that into, for the extent of the building out of the project, and I don't know how comfortable I am with that.
This has to be removed. Uh, we don't do the, it's new construction of a single-family dwelling detached garage. They need to remove that from the-
That's over on Mill Creek, right on Noack.
Was that a swimming pool?
No, that's the foundation.
I guess it, that's-
That's what they wanna de-water.
Into Mill Creek.
Where are they gonna put the, first of all, is, this is by Trap Pond?
Yeah, this is right on, on Noack Road, right across him.
Um-
Next to Bellanacre.
Yeah, what is in the water? Is there any, is there any issues?
That's the one, I've, I've always wondered what they did. They have like an upland reservoir that's been full of water for a couple of years now.
They wanna de-water it so they can finish the construction, but I, I don't know why they can't find a dry well to utilize. Instead of pumping it directly into the-
Yeah, that's not a good look.
Is there anything in the water that we have to have concerns with? I mean, if they're gonna pump it into the-
Could be chemicals, could be-
Is, you know, is there any-
Yeah, I mean, there's no real, I, I'm not okay with it.
I mean, we're looking at West Hampton and Quiog with PFOS and patrol, uh-
Would they have to prove that it is safe first?
And all of those other stuff.
Was there a house there, I wonder?
No, this is new construction.
It's new construction.
And there was no foundation ever, or?
This is kind of out of my ballpark as far as understanding what we've allowed in the past.
We, we have a, in Sagaponic, we have allowed de-watering, but I, I, I'm, you know, because of the bridge at the Gulf and all the test wells that they have upland, south of there, I don't know if there's anything in this water that could potentially, you know, cause harm.
We need more information to make a decision then. You can't do anything with this.
Yeah, I think a discussion with the-
Water analysis would, would definitely be called for before we do anything on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
They also mentioned a DEC permit too, but they didn't supply it to us.
We need to see that the DEC permit.
I would like to see that before.
We need to see the DEC permit. We need more information before we can do anything with this.
Well, there must be guidelines with the DEC permit that we can look at and have Joe look at, and, you know, an engineer maybe look at to see if there's any-
I think-
Further questions from-
The Health Department would wanna chime in on this too.
This is on hold.
This is on hold and have a letter drafted to them.
This is on hold. Need more information.
I think there was one more, right?
Yeah, I have one, I have the last one.
One forty-nine Big Fresh.
One forty-nine Big Fresh pond.
So it's four, four, wide and twenty-seven foot long, true flow, um, fixed dock, um, uh, tropical hardwood, um, stainless steel and gird, um. Yep, so, um, I do have, uh, plans here if you guys want to see them. Please stay forward, so.
They do have hand-drawn plans with no scale. I don't think you guys wanna accept that. There's no side profile.
There's no pictures, it's, it's a-
This is going on hold. We need, we need better information here, yeah?
The pictures are, yeah, this is-
Basically, it's a twenty-seven by four walkway with no, what, how are they gonna support?
It's a pin.
How are they gonna, is it, is it in there now already?
There's a float, there's a float here, that, I picture a float, it banged up.
That's what's currently there?
That's what-
That was this here?
I guess so.
They're not, I think they're, they wanna rebuilds.
Yeah, they, they wanna, yeah.
They're proposing, I don't-
What's this?
Was there a permit on this in the past?
I, I don't know.
We, we, we need, somebody's gotta come in and represent this application.
I agree.
Somebody's gotta come in and represent this application.
Yeah, we, we would need to see if there was an original permit, starting, that's just a startup.
This is, this has gone cold.
Built.
No, I know, yeah, I mean, it's legal, huh?
Yeah, I mean, this is for a fixed dock. That's obviously not a fixed dock that's in there, so they're planning on removing it. But I, I think you need to have a discussion with them.
They need to come in.
Yeah.
Have you contacted them?
A lot of questions.
McLaughlin?
About, yes.
They have an architect representing it, so I'm sure they can get us dialed in with some decent-looking plans.
And somebody's gotta come represent a stamp, put on it at the final-
Yeah.
Iteration, otherwise it's not gonna-
And I'll have Stephanie tomorrow do some historical background on it.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
That's on hold.
Yep.
There's nothing we can do with that right now. Okay. All right, so general permit applications for determination, final stamp plan review. We have Four Stone Lane, JMO Consulting, uh, representing Michael, no, Mark Roder.
To go.
Okay. I see Shakira is here. Shakira got a field trip from two forty west. Discuss some waterfowl hunting location permit applications that are needing determination. What a very nice job with this, Shakira.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
So you have somebody coming off the waitlist?
Um, we have, yeah, a couple, three people coming off the waitlist.
First one, permit number seventy?
Yes, James Frye, um, so he's in West Shennock. And he's coming off the waitlist, and, uh, Bay Constable said it was okay upon y'all's approval.
I'll go with it.
Okay.
That we can go.
Then we have permit number one eighty-two. Dr. Luke Babkab coming off the waitlist, and the Bay Constable said it's okay upon y'all's approval.
Jackpot.
You with that, Chip?
Yeah, I was wondering when that blind was gonna light up again, all right?
There you go.
Approved?
Yes.
Excellent. And then, uh, permit number one eighty, Jay Held, wants to transfer to Donald Murphy, um, upon the Bay Constables. Um, they said they, they're okay with it upon your approval.
Of course, upon our approval. Then they've meeting all the guidelines. You go with that, Chip?
Yep.
And permit number one fifty-one, David Knuckle, he wants to add a co-perme Alexander Knuckle, and that's okay with the Bay Constables as well.
All right. Yep.
And the last one coming off the waitlist is permit number two forty-six, uh, Brian Fichette.
All right.
And it needs the Bay Constable's approval. So it's applying their approval.
Okay.
Five for five, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shakira. So that concludes our work session.
I just got one thing I wanna read into the record.
Thank you, Shakira.
Uh, I spoke to the Southampton Baymen's Association, and I just wanted to read this, uh, letter into the record. Dear trustees, there's a growing talks amongst baymen asking the access of Quantic Bay shellfish. This area has been closed to shellfishing for thirty years, not due to water quality, but because it is designated a shellfish management area. The plan was to relieve the harvest pressure, and the bay would rebound to its once abundance. We feel this would be a good time to reopen the bay to shellfishing. Allowing shellfish harvest in Quantic Bay would allow us to get an idea of what's in there and what further management practices are needed. Thank you for, for your continued support, William Caldwell, Southampton Baymen's Association. Ed and I discussed this, um, God, I'm always wanting to think that working over an area is good to kind of promote a new set, and there's a lot of clam larvae running around the bays lately, so I think it would kind of be constructive to open this up as conditional harvest.
This is prior to me being on the board, uh, it was something that the trustees had done. They, uh, had a tram, a clam transplant out of, uh, Reeves's Bay or the Pecanic River. I believe they moved, uh, clams out of there twice and planted them in this, uh, Quantic Bay, uh, with the Nature's Conservancy doing a monitoring of the shellfish. Um, those clams are long since dead. What happened was the, uh, acidity in the bay, basically, uh, the clams actually just, the shells just crumbled and they died. Uh, there's been no, uh, other projects done in that area in thirty years I, I can remember. So, uh, talking to some, a couple of baymen, uh, and, uh, talking to Willie also, because he is the president of the Baymen's Association, uh, he polled the, uh, some of the baymen, and they all agree that opening it up and, you know, for this year and to see what's in there, uh, maybe there's clams in there, maybe there's oysters, steamers, or some kind of product, and get some kind of basically boots-on-the-ground kind of, uh, you know, analysis of what's going on in there in the last, you know, thirty years would be good for us, and then we can make a determination moving forward for next year whether we continue to open it up, or do shellfish restocking, or whatever we do as, as a board. So I, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's something that, you know, would, uh, you know, allow the baymen a little bit more working area, especially in the wintertime, because it's a small embayment, and it's, uh, on windy days, it's a good place to work if there's any product in there to, you know, catch.
So Joe, what's the protocol on that?
Well, first off, Chip, you're gonna need to print out what you read into the record, so we have it for posterity and for the record, so to speak.
Yeah.
Did, what is the DEC's position on this?
They have not closed it. It's, it's something that the town trustees took solely upon themselves to do. Um, they consider it a certified body of water as of December first, I believe it's December first, to, uh, April first.
It's a seasonal certification?
Seasonal certification, and it's, as far as they're concerned, if you're a town resident, you can go in there and harvest. The only restrictions was put on by the trustees.
We would have to have a public hearing on that.
You do, yeah.
Just to be clear, it's only the seasonally certified area that you're looking to take this sanctuary, because there's also closed areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Will then remain as a sanctuary and closed area because it's closed.
So then what we're gonna need to do is, at the next meeting, schedule a public hearing.
Yep.
Well, resolution for the public hearing.
Right, a resolution for a further looking-
For the first meeting in December.
Correct. That's what we're gonna have to do, so.
It would almost coordinate, uh, with, uh, the opening of the bay on a normal, uh, year, but we won't have a public hearing so that any of the residents can give input, and any of the baymen that have been, you know, you know, their input's important.
Yeah.
We've done this in the past.
Meaning the earliest we could, we could open it up would be December seventh, which is, yeah.
All right, I know I'm getting ahead of us here, but I, I would like to have some sort of reporting requirements. Like, I wanna know, like, what, what kind of harvest they're getting out of there.
I mean, we could do that. We, on the public hearing, we can put that, you know, criteria. If, if you're gonna work in there, we wanna know what species you're catching and how many.
How much.
And, you know, uh, just for us, so that we-
Good idea of effort, too, you know, like-
So we can manage it better.
Get up there, Matt.
Soon as I get a day off, maybe I'll go.
Go do some reporting.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's something that we, we, it's a resource that we really haven't added to or subtracted from. We don't know if it's been a good or a bad thing, you know, keeping it closed for that long, but all the shellfish that was originally put in there with the monitoring of the Nature's Conservancy are long, are long since dead, so, uh-
Yeah, along, along those lines, like, this was, this was probably one of the most productive bay embainments. It's, it's similar to Meecocks.
In the sixties?
In the sixties and seventies, so I mean, they're, you know-
Very similarly shaped.
It's, it's-
Could I ask a stupid question perhaps, but could we maybe get Cornell or somebody to take a look at the clams before we have the public hearing? And they see if they're worthy of opening up the area?
I think, I think a bunch of baymen could work, work it over.
Yeah, but a lot of baymen have an interest in, in that, and Cornell doesn't have a dog in the fight. That's-
Right.
It's, it's a non-biased report we would be getting.
We can see if they wanna participate in the public hearing process, for sure.
I, I would, I would feel better for us in that case.
Yeah, sorry, so, listen, follow it by protocol. You're gonna have a public hearing. Have a good public hearing, really do a good job on it.
We'll ask Cornell to come in and give some input, being that they have done shellfish restoration in Western Shennock Bay, and that's, and also Murchus Bay with the, with the Murchus Bay project, so they, they are on both sides of this, you know, body of water.
Anybody in the town's welcome to come give us-
Yeah, I'm not saying that the baymen wouldn't be honest, but, again, a non-biased report gives this board the opportunity to make the right decision.
Especially if it's CS science-based.
We'll cover it, Ken.
Well, I like to be educated on when we do things now, so when we can make a better decision.
Well, you want to have a good public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah, it includes, it includes, um, input from all the stakeholders and various different people. That way the board gets the, the proper information to make a, a good, sound decision. Yes. All right.
Did I, I feel like I, I see, I've got, uh, DKR Shores here. Did I, did we miss something?
I'm just here to be invited in to talk with sixty-five Cliff.
We're not doing sixty-five Cliff.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss an application from you.
No. There's nothing to discuss at this meeting.
Okay.
On that topic.
Um, all right, so, you good? So, we're just, we're gonna have to do an unofficial set of, schedule a public hearing date.
I agree. I think it's a good way to, uh-
We'll follow the protocols.
Yep, I'll have it for the seventeenth, public hearing for the tw- seventh of December.
The only thing I wanna note is that this tragedy that's just occurred in our bay here, right, with the kayakers? I think, you know, this is terrible, you know, this is a, people wanna come out, enjoy the resource and enjoy the water, and I hate hearing about these situations that occur, it goes with the territory. But life jackets are so important and, right?
I didn't hear this story.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was called in. That's on standby, eleven o'clock at night to go out with a ski, but, luckily, we didn't have to.
People kayaking and-
We found one body and they're still searching for the other one. The problem is, and, and I've mentioned this at multiple meetings over years, is that the use of summertime sports in, in the colder months is a real problem. People don't understand when you go out kayaking, even if you have a wetsuit on, that you're, and, and the water's fifty degrees or forty-eight degrees, and you get wet, and then by the time you realize that hypothermia has set in, you know, it's, it's too late. I mean, having a flotation device would at least allowed them to float up, because the tides were extremely low in the bay, so there was plenty of sandbars that they went across with those kayaks, that they could have beached the kayak and then, you know, managed to get to an area where they could at least hopefully make a call or signal somebody. But, you know, it's, it's, it's really important that, you know-
I have whistle and then-
Well, that, that, touching on this and looking at our kayak program, uh, rack program, that all the kayaks that are there have, you know, basically have, you know, a, a label on them, so when, when these kayaks wash ashore, we can identify where they came from and who was using them. And another thing is, is when you're going out kayaking or using these water wintertime, uh, summer sports in the wintertime, you should notify, you know, someone in your household or someone that you're going to partake in this. There was an example where somebody from Acrobar got blown across the meshat. I mean, no one knew, I mean, it's a terrible thing, but, you know, if, if you know at six o'clock, uh, at sunrise, or at five o'clock or four o'clock, that your loved one or a person that you were told that, "I'm gonna go out kayaking," didn't show up, you can make an inquiry.
Yeah. You gotta, not four or five, four hours.
Return time, like, I need to be back by four o'clock.
You should always have a flow plan this time of year.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, you know, it's tragic.
Not being familiar and, or using the kayak in the summertime gives you some complacency, thinking, "Oh, I'm gonna go out there." And also, it was blowing almost forty-five miles an hour, so the conditions were very, very poor. I know where they launched out of was probably very calm, but once you got a hundred or two hundred yards offshore, it was rough.
And it was an outgoing tide.
That's the thing, you're in the lee, and once you get out of the lee, it's the wind. You are victory at sea, and, yeah, it's just-
Especially on those kayaks, because they run on top of the water.
Please be careful, folks, you know, that's all. All right, let's, uh, move into exec session. So I'll make a motion to adjourn, go into exec session for the purposes of discussing confidential legal advice, seconded by trustee Moran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mic's off, guys.